Good evening and welcome to the Monday City Council meeting on May 22nd. I open this meeting at 7 o'clock PM. I start off the meetings with a mindfulness moment, so I invite you to get comfortable in your chair and find a few moments to unwind from your workday or whatever was on your mind today. Sit back. Take out your stress down to your toes, maybe wiggle your feet a little bit. We do this to get ready for this meeting, become present. I invite you to start paying attention to how you're breathing and start to take deeper, slower breaths. Take a good, deep inhale, cleansing exhale. Invite you to take three inhales, counting to four on an inhale, and then exhale on five. Start with our first inhale. Invite you to shift how you're thinking, let go of what your brain worked on this afternoon into our shared community space, the City Council meeting. Focus on coming together and helping us address concerns that the community may have, uplift our successes together, and address change because our community is always changing and that can feel uncomfortable. So I just wanted to express my gratitude as well during this time for you being aware of your local government and involved in your local government. Local government's being challenged now all across the United States, but it's your government, it's your local government. Your awareness and involvement helps make it what it is and to reflect your community Remember, we're all residents first. Everyone up here is a resident first, your neighbors. We're all here to better our community. Let's take one last big inhale. Blow that out. All right. Invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
James, Leaks May, McColsky, Pollocka, Piana.
Here. Next up is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the following amendment, that we add the Accessibility Advisory and Inclusion Commission and as a presentation, as Presentation 4B, so that would move the Fire Department to 4C.
Moved by Leaks May and seconded by Bruner James.
Leaks May, James, McColsky, Pollocka, Piana.
And that is approved unanimously. And now we are moving on to presentations, and our first presentation tonight is 4A, a presentation highlighting newly relaunched Ferndale Collective by the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission. And I'm sure you can just roll into 4B if you are doing also the presentation. Are you doing the presentation too?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I got them messed up. I'm sorry. They're the same, the, sorry. I didn't write it out. You're not rolling into 4B. That is a different boards and commission. Didn't mean to confuse you all. You was a mess up. What happened, did you go by acronyms? Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Council, city staff, including the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission, in this evening's agenda. I'm here to announce the rebranding of the FACC's Ferndale Art Census as the Ferndale Collective. The Ferndale Collective's objective is to promote the history and future of public art in Ferndale through support, advocacy, and resources for artists and for our community at large. The Ferndale Collective will include artists, creatives, art lovers, community members, local businesses, city staff, volunteers, a supportive community dedicated to the advocacy and engagement of Ferndale art and culture, a collaborative hub of Ferndale artisans fostering creativity, creative activity within the local community, a diverse network of artists committed to the education and experiences of Ferndale art and culture. So what the heck does the Ferndale Collective do? Our mission is to provide support to artists and to promote community engagement and collaboration in Ferndale through awareness and opportunity. We aim to achieve this mission in the following ways: engaging local businesses who are passionate about investing in the arts; strengthening a community of Ferndale artists through opportunities for networking and collaboration; establishing opportunities for community engagement focused on public art; cultivating an appreciation of art and culture in the community of Ferndale. You all have a, council has a handout of what the actual questions are that the artists engage with when they go on the collective to file their information. And it appears like this, with the exception of the top banner, that's our new logo for the collective. The Ferndale Art Census, now the Ferndale Collective, has collected only 60 profiles with artist's information over the last three years. The form to complete is housed on a Google Doc that is only accessible if you are given the link. One of our requests tonight is asking Council to add the Ferndale Collective to the city's website. This would actually be two listings. One, a link to the current form for artists to fill out, that's what you have in front of you, and two, if possible, from a programming standpoint, a list that is programmed to populate on a separate link with the artist's name, type of art, their website, URL, and social media links. This would be for businesses and entities to contact the artist for work, mentorship, shows, et cetera, and that's one of the things I'm coming to ask you all to approve tonight. With the rebranding, we've expanded the scope of the census, now collective, to include a much broader list of artists and artisans. Like the name, the list is much more inclusive, now mirroring the city's vision of inclusion and the DDA's "You Belong Here" mission. With the new energy that the collective brings, we are actively promoting it at as many Ferndale art events as possible. With this push, moving the collective's home from Google Docs to a searchable place on the city's website will increase our outreach exponentially and introduce the collective to many more Ferndale artists, and by adding the component for businesses and community members, grant them access to artists for events and projects. This exposure will bring opportunities to our community's artists and enable our businesses to utilize our artists to promote and enhance their outreach and image. Our immediate plans to promote the collective include the Backyard Art Fair, which I canvassed Saturday with the cards that I've given you there that have that QR code. That gives them access to go right to the Google Doc and fill it out. And four artists have already done that. As well, I added following all of the artists that were part of the Backyard Art Festival onto our Instagram page so that we can engage with them. I talked to the artists at the art fair about the collective and explained the QR code that directs them to the collective's location, which is currently in Google Docs. Our plans also include our collaboration with the DDA's events, including 9-on-9, as well as upcoming festivities for the "You Belong Here" mural project. Recently, we included the Ferndale Library's Marketing Director, Jeff Milo, in our meetings and have created a collaboration on two upcoming library events happening on both June 7th and July 29th. Also, Jeff and the library have graciously agreed to include the collective's information and QR code in their digital and printed newsletters. We also requested, requested, and received, an invitation to be Jeff's guest on an upcoming episode of the library's popular podcast, "A Little Too Quiet," to introduce the Ferndale Collective and explain our mission. Our artist engagement ideas also include monthly artist spotlights, posts on Facebook and Instagram highlighting a local artist to promote them and share a blurb about their background and story; a newsletter via email to artists for announcements on upcoming opportunities and events, which might include meet and greets to encourage collaborative projects and strengthen relationship between the artists and the community; and art exhibitions. We would invite guest jurors to select finalists. Those individuals would be from Ferndale's academia or local art gallery directors to add publicity and engagement to the event. We would host the opening reception that could include artist talks to discuss the inspiration behind their work and also include other artists in those events, like bands, vocalists, spoken word artists, poetry, et cetera. We're asking Council tonight for four things. One, including the Ferndale Collective on the city's website now or once the updated site is complete. Two, having the list programmed to populate to a list that includes the artist's name, website, URL, and social media links. This list would be for businesses and entities to access the artist for work, shows, mentorship opportunities, et cetera. Three, approval to promote the collective on the library's podcast from Council. Four, include the collective's details and QR code in the city's newsletters and any city communications that will expose the collective to businesses and community looking to include artists in their projects and events, as well as the artists themselves, to list their information on the collective's list of artists. Do any of you have questions?
No, I'll just have, start with a comment. I think this is fantastic. You're building on what you said you were going to do and broadening your scope and efforts, and I think it's great. And, you know, we don't have a resolution to approve this tonight, but we're getting a new website, so I have a feeling it's going to have a home on the new website.
We were made aware of that because we have your Communications Director as our liaison.
Yeah.
So we, in a perfect world, it would happen now, but we understand that it's probably most effective if we wait until the new website goes up.
It's not that far away.
Good.
It's very close. So I just think this is fantastic. I appreciate you being here.
We're a small but mighty team.
How our boards and commissions operate, small and mighty.
Mayor, are you entertaining questions? Through the chair, I second the applause at the cool idea and rebranding and sort of reinvigorating. Question about, is it strictly limited to artists who are Ferndale residents?
No. If you look on the card, it says Ferndale or Close.
Got you. Okay. And, I welcome you to Close. And maybe this is more of a comment than a, I know that there are some fantastic artists, whether it's visual performance, both at Ferndale High School and in the Hazel Park School system, which includes Ferndale residents, so maybe there's some fertile ground for developing those.
That's a great idea. We'll discuss that at our next meeting.
And I feel like I had one more question. Overall, I think this is a really great one.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, I remember what it was. Sort of a caution on auto-populating data entered from a form. I'm sure this goes without saying that our IT folks would figure this out, to have some kind of screening so that people aren't just putting spam in.
Right. And the list, as it populates, I mean, it's really easy to go through, and it would be difficult for somebody to put spam up there. Like, it would be very obvious. Like, the biggest problem we have right now is people listing their information three or four times.
Got it. Okay.
Any more questions? So I'd love to say thank you to the Mayor, Council and staff, and especially Councilwoman Laura McColsky and Ferndale City Staff Member, Director of Communications, Kara Sokol, who both graciously contribute their time and expertise at our FACC meetings, and to the FACC's Chair, Mary Ann Wessels, for her help and support of my presentation tonight, and also Summer from the DDA, who quelched my nerves and gave me a basis to create this presentation. So thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Lynn. You did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move now to, sorry, you're 4C, Chief. You're not, you're not next.
Well, while they're coming up, I'm just plugging in so it's ready.
You got bumped. Sorry. Next up is the Ferndale Accessibility Inclusion Commission Presentation, the annual presentation of the Commission. I like your t-shirt, Alan. So every year, we've asked all of our boards and commissions to do an annual report, and they're slowly coming in, and I appreciate everyone putting their effort in to do this report. I'm sorry, I gotta take this. I have a resident who will not stop calling me.
Thank you for having us today. We are the Ferndale Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Commission. My name's Alan Hale. I use he/him pronouns.
My name's Rachel Zaback. I use she/her pronouns.
So we've got kind of a lot of words in our name, so we are the Ferndale Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Commission. We call ourselves Fayak for short, just make it easy, but we're really here to help make Ferndale a place of choice to work, live, and visit for people with disabilities and remove barriers to access our community. So we're really here for anyone with a disability or anyone who's about to have a disability who's in our city and making sure that it's welcome for all. Today, we've got kind of our roster of members. We've got a few new impending members as well. We do have one spot open, so something there if someone's listening and is interested in joining. Our Council Liaison is Councilwoman Raylon Leaks May, and our City Staff Liaison is Scott Worthing. Here's a picture of us, and I'll talk a little bit about this later in the presentation, of our members the last time we were all together in the field in early March when we did an accessibility walk through downtown, so it was a really nice day for that.
All right, thank you. So because our focuses are accessibility and inclusion, it felt like it would be helpful to go over just what accessibility is, so we're on the same page. So accessibility is the question of whether something can be used by So, accessibility is the question of whether something can be used by all people regardless of their level of ability or disability. And everything that people use can be made accessible: products, devices, services, vehicles, physical environments, web infrastructure, and more. So, some examples of that could include eliminating physical barriers in outdoor and indoor spaces, things like installing ramps, and especially ramps that aren't too steep, as an alternative to steps or in addition to steps, making sure that walkways in and out are like wide enough for people with mobility to pass through, et cetera. Accessible web design, you don't want to design a website that only some people can actually see the things on. Making information available in many formats, so perhaps making a sign that has both physical print and braille and also has some sort of auditory component. If there's some sort of multimedia element, managing noise and light levels to minimize sensory stress, et cetera. There's a lot of different ways that things can be made accessible. Lack of accessibility reduces the ability of disabled people to live independent lives while enjoying public spaces and resources. So, if we want our disabled residents to be able to be active parts of public life here in Ferndale, then accessibility is an incredibly important thing. And as a commission, our role is to make sure that Ferndale is inclusive for all residents by removing those barriers to accessibility at all levels of public life and advising on how city projects in development can be approached through a lens of accessibility so that the new things that we add to the city are also accessible.
So, we've compiled a few lists of, especially with this being our, what we've been up to in the last year here, in our last presentation. I'm not going to read through everything in the lists, but just to touch on who we've been engaging with and what we've been up to. Our roster here, if you're a department in the city of Ferndale and you're not on this list, chances are you're targeted next. So, be prepared. But, over the time we've met with mayor and I think just about every city council member at least a few times, we have worked really closely with city manager and his city clerk, Dean, you are on that list at the very top. We've gotten to meet our friends with CED, who I see in the audience, DPW, one of our best friends, I'd say, in terms of physical accessibility, communications, Kara as well, the DDA. We work extensively with parks and recreation and special events. Some notable projects in the last year or so, working really closely with Lorena and her team on the different grants that our parks have gotten and making sure that accessibility is a part of the foundation of those. So, a lot of the improvements you've seen in the parks lately are making sure that there are accessible trails, making sure there are accessible amenities, and we've had just a small hand of that, thanks to a lot of the proactive work that Lorena's done. We've had the chance to help with Ferndale Moves, Eight Mile and Woodward, when they were redoing that project and doing some art installation. We were able to work quite a bit on the Master Land Use Plan as well. All of these have really big accessibility impacts, so it's been great. When we think of ways to drive that change, there's a mantra in accessibility, and it's shift left. It'll always be cheaper to implement when we think of it in advance, and these planning moments are as advanced as it gets. So, this not only is good for our residents with disabilities, but it's also great for the future where this becomes cheaper to implement down the road. We've also been working quite a bit with Kara on the website and making sure that some of the accessibility gaps in the website today, things as deep as PDF accessibility to things like contrast and alt text descriptions for images, making sure that we're thinking of those as we're launching a new site. Something we were really excited to help with was voting support and helping with some of the polling accessibility walkthroughs in advance of last fall. And then, something we also really enjoyed was being invited by the city manager to participate with the Facility Task Force. We weren't officially part of the task force, but it was great to be there as support and help point things out along the way so that folks could make informed decisions. And then, these are a list of projects that we more initiated, so rather than purely advisory, these are things we've been up to. Folks may have seen myself and Dave standing here last July for Disability Pride Month, which is a growing effort that started in Boston in the early 2000s, and it's grown into a global movement, but it's something that we've been acknowledging in Ferndale the last several years. And speaking of pride, accessibility at Ferndale Pride, which Rachel will talk about here in a moment, we did, as we had some new commission members and talking about all the changes that spring will bring, our commission decided to do a walkthrough of downtown, and we learned a lot, saw a lot, but mostly got to bond as a commission, getting out and enjoying the day together and seeing what we can do. We had some members participate last month for Autism Acceptance Month with the Ferndale Library. As I said, we're working with the city website, and then we helped DPW update a lot of the signs you see around town. So, I encourage everyone, as you get out of the building, I've got a slide that'll show some of those changes, but it was a real big win for Ferndale. And so, now, we'll go through just a couple of these in a slightly deeper dive, and we'll kick off with Rachel and Ferndale Pride.
Thank you. So, Ferndale Pride is one of the areas where we've initiated a project and seen a lot of positive change as a result. So, there was some public input that we gathered following the Ferndale Pride 2021 event, which was kind of our return to doing Pride as a city after quarantine. And there were a lot of comments from people in, on how that festival was inaccessible in certain ways. So, we contacted Ferndale Pride's Executive Director, Julia Music, who was really awesome in working with us to make many facets of Ferndale Pride 2022 last year a lot more accessible, improving on a lot of those things from 2021 that we heard were barriers to access. So, Director Music helped us to make a significant number of accessibility improvements from 21, sorry, 2021 to 2022, and those include all of the ones that are listed on the screen: greater availability of and promotion for sober spaces and activities at the festival, quiet, or more porta-potties in a greater number of locations. So, people didn't have to walk nearly as far, and they were easier to locate, people didn't need to wait as long, quieter stage performances, for example, the drag performances that are scheduled at Time Start Festival. Free earplugs were provided to attendants at both event stages. The amount of stage events for which ASL, American Sign Language interpreters were present, that increased, so there was a lot more sign language interpretation at stage events. More seating was provided at many places throughout the festival, so a lot more places for people to sit and rest. There was greater clarity in volunteer position descriptions so that people that needed that greater degree of clarity to really know what they were getting into had that. And the volunteer shirts for Pride 2022 were designed with colorblindness in mind so that volunteers and also attendees of Pride who are colorblind were able to see those shirts in a crowd. So, that is a list of things that we kind of talked through with Director Music, and ultimately, she went and implemented them on her end, and that was super amazing. Something that we worked more directly with on our art end was a sensory tent that we had at Pride for the first time last year. So, this was something that we were given by Pride Director Music for free. It was sponsored by one of the organizations that sponsors the festival, and it was a place where Pride attendees could rest at throughout the day. It had a table and chairs, cold water and juice, bags of chips, a quiet space to recuperate, and ultimately, it had a really significant positive impact. We collected data on usage, and it was used by 52 different attendees throughout the day for an average of 11 minutes per person, and when we summed up the amount of time that each person who used the booth spent in it, that totaled out to about nine hours of use collectively between all of the different members of the public that used it. So, that was our first run, and we did a lot of good with that just the first time. We also collected some input, constructive criticism, things that were good, things that would need improvement last year, and we used that input to plan out how we would do it better this year. So, we have that sensory tent again this year. It's going to be at Ferndale Pride 2023 in early June, and, yeah, the space is going to be an even more conducive space to people resting, de-stressing from sensory stress, all sorts of other things. Anyone who needs it is going to be able to use it. And we just want to, before we move to the next slide and talk about other things, thank Ferndale Pride Executive Director, Julia Music, and Ferndale Pride Logistics Coordinator, Sean Starkey, for their continued help and support because they've both been really amazing. We met with them in the fall after Pride 2022 to talk about all of the input that we had gotten, and they were amazingly receptive. They've also been making improvements on their end, so this is sure to be a really collaborative endeavor for years to come.
One other spotlight, it's a tough act to follow. One other spotlight that we wanted to highlight was the accessibility walk-through. And this was welcoming some new commission members and letting folks get creative with things, and we had a little booklet printed for our Excessi stroll, and this was kind of a pilot for us as a commission to look at things, but we did this with the mind of hopefully growing this to something that we can share with council and share with others in the community to see firsthand what navigating our city is like with a disability and what things to be mindful of. So, it was a bit of a scavenger hunt of getting to spot things. We had real tangible outcomes come out of it, of a pleasant afternoon walking around together. A lot of questions on whether the Worthington back alley behind the businesses along Nine Mile is actually a street and warrants adding an actual sidewalk with pedestrian access. There was, especially with snow, it was head-scratching for us, and it's something I think folks are still looking into. We had a really good follow-up discussion with our friends with DPW on some of the snow clearance. This was one of those examples where we just got dumped on in one weekend, and we got to see the aftermath of that. So, it's, we got to explore what those turnaround times are typically like, how things are moved, and had a really constructive discussion. And then, I think it's a perfect time, and it's one of our priorities for the commission for the future, is patio access versus sidewalk access. And in our post-COVID world, where patios were expanded to support our local businesses, everybody loves our patios, something to be mindful of is just how that interacts with sidewalk accessibility at the same time. So, with, our commission did this walkthrough, and all the sidewalks were still empty, so it provided a good lens on what those clear access routes look like. And as we have our Woodward businesses currently without patios, it again provides that example for us to make sure we're adhering to guidelines and doing things the right way in Ferndale. And then, this was probably one of the easiest recommendations we made and one of the fastest actions I've seen of a department in Ferndale, but shout out to James Jamison and Dan's team and DPW for this one. Effective July 25th of last year, Gretchen Whitmer signed into law two house bills that helped make the Accessible Icon Project our official state parking. So, you'll see these signs around Ferndale especially. I think we, I don't, it's a big claim, but I think we're one of the first municipalities to fully adopt it that I've seen. But, it's a more progressive sign that really helps deviate from the traditional, the typical International Standards Organization icon you see of the person in the wheelchair. That was designed in the 70s with some Danish design. It doesn't really, when you compare it side by side to the traditional gendered markings, it's a very different width, it's very different shape, and there's been a movement starting in 2010 to make a more active icon. And so, Michigan is now the 14th state to adopt that, and we're really proud to, I think it took all of three emails to see this changed around Ferndale. And I wanted to highlight, this is a picture of my wife and I on our walk in Martin Road Park, and this is an example of those new signs going up in what had been kind of a troubled pinch point, and DPW was just really amazing to act on this. So, thank you to that team. And next, I promise we're here in our finish line. One of the big initiatives our commission is always working on is recognizing the stories for accessibility and inclusion in Ferndale, and it's groups, whether it's an organization or a business, that is going out of their way to really support disability inclusion. That's something we want to know about, and we want to share your story, and we want to celebrate. So, we outlined a lot of criteria, but we try to make sure people don't like accidentally get the accessibility award if it's something that they didn't purposely do. So, we really want to recognize the effort and that human impact folks make. We really want to tell these stories so that it sets an example for other businesses and organizations in Ferndale. And it doesn't have to be something big. You don't have to put an elevator in a building. You don't have to make huge structural changes. It can be as easy as doing staff training, but we want to, we want to hear about what those improvements are. And then, ADA, when folks refer to accessibility in terms of ADA, that's usually like nails on a chalkboard for a lot of us because that means that's the bare federal minimum that was defined in 1990, and often, that doesn't mean it's an inclusive experience. So, we want to hear those stories that are going above and beyond. So, stay tuned. We'll be promoting this a lot on our Facebook page and others, and it's all leading up to one of our biggest celebrations of the year, Disability Pride Month. These are a lot of the milestones we have throughout the year with Disability Community Day of Mourning, Autism Acceptance Month, Global Accessibility Action or Awareness Day, Disability Pride Month. October is a federal holiday with Disability Employment Awareness Month, and then the UN has International Day of Persons with Disabilities in December. So, this is something we try to blast out communications with. We've partnered with Kara several times in the past on helping city communication follow these as well. And be prepared to see us again. We'll be working on our proclamation for Disability Pride Month coming up this July, and it's the 33rd anniversary of the ADA coming up. And this holiday has grown to be celebrated not just in the US but around the world as well, with the EU about to pass their sweeping legislation that goes into effect in 2025. So, I want to thank everybody for the time today. We'll be, again, sharing out invitations to our Accessibility and Inclusion Award. We do have a commission seat open, so again, if anyone's interested, please contact city clerk and follow the process on the website. And then, like many in Ferndale, the best way to follow us is on Facebook.
Thank you, Alan. Fantastic presentation, you and Rachel. Thank you so much for putting so much time and effort into this presentation with the whole group and the time and effort you do on the commission annually. It's quite extraordinary what you have accomplished as a commission, so. And I just wanted to say thanks to Alan for all you. Alan has changed how I look at disability, and I now have the mantra of inclusion, not compliance, and I pass it on to every state official who will listen to me. But I've also relied heavily on Alan for lots of insights into Woodward Avenue type of things with M.D. So, I just appreciate him always responding to me and answering my questions. I'm going to open it up to council. Oh, and I forgot one thing that you forgot to put on there. You are impacting housing.
Yeah.
One of your successes is that we're starting to require developers to build more barrier-free units in some of the new developments, and so, and city council is helping move that along. And so, and city council is helping move that along. So thanks to Councilwoman Leaks May helping bridge that divide with the commission.
Yeah.
That's a huge policy win, making a difference.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. All right, we are now moving on to four C. Fire Chief, come back up. Ferndale Fire Department, twenty twenty-two annual report presentation, so.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just wanted to give a brief overview of our annual report of what your fire department has been doing or kind of did and accomplished in twenty twenty-two. I think it's always good to start and acknowledge the mission and vision of our fire department that I think you'll see as we go through to support the men and women of my fire department really embrace and strive to live and reflect every day. Our mission is to save lives and protect property through calls of service, education and prevention, continuously training members to provide the best possible service to the community while demonstrating safety and professionalism in any situation. And our vision is leadership to the community through service, education, involvement and inspiration. We do have four core values that we embrace. We want to be progressive and develop and embrace technology and advancement in the fire service as well as adapting to dynamic needs in our community. This is really important to ensure our safety, but also ensure we can provide the best service to our community and increase safety of our communities. Integrity, leading by example, being honest, fair and ethical in all our relationships, doing the right thing even when no one is looking. Taking pride in our service and assistance in every encounter regardless of situation. And having humility, being open to personal change and continuous improvement and learning from mistakes and successes in equal measure. I feel like the last couple of years, we've really been in there. We've been in a lot of change, a lot of growth and a lot of learning. So our department is comprised of three divisions. We have our operations division. This is the division that has the personnel that staffs the fire stations, staffs the response apparatus, and they provide a full array of emergency and non-emergency incident response services and operations, including fire, EMS and specialty response. They also do professional development, continuing education, community outreach and education. This division is, has twenty-four budgeted positions. Six of those are officers, fire officers, eighteen firefighters, and they're the ones that staff the fire stations twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So both stations, all their apparatus. The next division is fire prevention. And this is, has one funded staff position right now, which is my fire marshal. And he is responsible for building inspections and safety assessments, mobile food vendor and tent safety inspections, fire investigations, and overseeing community risk reduction programs and education. And the administration division is myself, and I have one CSR who actually supports all three of these divisions. And in the admin, on my shoulders is management of departmental operations, emergency management, records management, burn permit issuance, budget, and I don't know, all the admin stuff. I wanted to highlight just a couple categories of incident responses to show kind of how it trends. And I went back to two thousand and eighteen so you could see kind of how it's trending up. So fire calls, two thousand and twenty was an anomaly year, and we saw this a lot with families being home during COVID. There was a few more fire incidents, people in their homes more. It drove that number up unfortunately. But our fire instances slowly took up, but stayed kind of consistent from two thousand and nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-two. On the EMS side, our emergency medical services and other rescue services, you can see where that really trends up and increases significantly year after year, which is why we're pushing to get, you know, second ambulance staffed. And I guess I should have noted when we're talking about divisions, I said we had twenty-four budgeted positions for the operations division. When I took over as chief, we had eight vacancies, which is a third of that division was vacant positions, and we are now down to only two vacancies. So we made great strides in filling personnel staffing and getting us closer to have staffing to try to have two ambulances every day for our communities. And as you see, the number trends up, you see why that's so important. But beyond that, we also had seven hundred and ninety-four other responses that were not something on fire or EMS call. And we did have specialty response incidents of noting, we had two hazmat incidences here in Ferndale during two thousand and twenty-two at Gage Chemical. Neither one impacted the public. And we also had a gas station fuel leak that went into the sewer system that we had to work with to mitigate. We have, we are a part of the Oakway Mutual Aid System. There's eleven departments in that now, it was ten. We've received aid two hundred and twenty-four times from our Oakway Mutual Aid Partners and we've provided aid one hundred and sixty-three times. We also have with our specialty response teams and the personnel that have the response, we had, we responded up to Gaylord in Michigan when they had their chain of those go through in May of two thousand and twenty-two. So we do go way beyond our borders. We also were out at Oakland Hills Country Club. I was there for ten hours at that fire, hubbing command staff and running operations on the office side of that building to the front side. My fire prevention division, like I said, this is a division of one currently. A big priority for us and for our city is the community risk reduction. And what this does is it helps us identify and prioritize local risks in our community so we can put together integrated and strategic investment of resources to reduce incurrence of things that could harm our community or things that we can't stop, reduce the impact they have if they do occur. So that is the whole premise behind what's called CRR or Community Risk Reduction. He also does the various inspections, certificate of occupancies, home's fire safety, liquor licenses, new construction, safety inspections. And when people apply for their first open burn permit, he goes out and does that inspection. Investigations when fires do occur, my officers and I will do some initial, but sometimes I'll have to call him for further determination on anything that involves injury or potentially arson or anything like that, then he's called back in. And then community education, he heads all that up for community outreach, our school programs and our senior fire safety that he has gone and done specific trainings at some of our senior housing in the community. We also want to, when we're thinking about doing all this responding, how do we keep our community safe beyond the community that we're responding to to help? But how do we keep all those other community members safe that are not involved in an incident that we might come in contact with in route? We added Haas Alerting to our fire apparatus, which our neighboring communities also have. And what this is, is a safety cloud that delivers real-time digital alerts to drivers that emergency vehicles, incident responders, work zones and road hazards are ahead. And it's supposed to reduce the risk of collision by ninety percent, which is great. You can see the numbers up here. This is real data that feedback from our devices and how many incidents and how many drivers are notified when we're in route. This comes across if somebody has the Waze app going, some in-vehicle navigation, but it allows them to know we're there so they can reroute or at least slow down and have some fair warning that we're coming because we're going to be on the same track or that we're ahead. So it's a great thing to improve their safety and ours. But beyond the answering the call, I have amazing men and women in my fire department that are always coming to me with ways that they want to serve their community outside of responding to those calls. I have people that have donated time to Team Guts, the American Lung Association, Fight for Air, Stair Climb. This was last year. We just did it again this year, but last year. Our small and mighty fire department, our female finished number one out of all the females that participated, and our team was number four out of every fire department that participated. We raised money for, they raised money for breast cancer every year, and we raised money for Jeff Brozek Foundation, which was a fallen brother from a neighboring fire department who passed away on duty. And then we work with Elks to also help. And there's a few more I didn't put on there, but just goes to show how much they do and beyond. We also wanted to improve processes, increase customer service to our communities and make the other services we offer beyond emergency response more accessible. So we created, we embrace QR technology so people can scan the QR codes to get right to the links where they want to be to schedule a home fire safety inspection, car seat installation or to get their burn permit so they can enjoy those campfires in their backyard. And I want to close out with a point of the impact of investment. I know the fire department, fire departments are expensive, our vehicles are expensive, our toys are expensive, our tools that we use. But this is one example of the impact of that investment. In October ninth, twenty twenty, we added our very first Lucas device to our vehicles. The Lucas device is a mechanical CPR device that when we place on the patient, it could take over and perform the chest compressions to free up our responders to do other life-saving treatments and measures. In twenty twenty-two, you see there was a, unfortunately, an increased number of cardiac arrests we had in our community. And the number one group that initiates CPR was our law enforcement. So we should feel very proud of our police department here we have, that we have here in Ferndale. We are proud to partner and provide them with this recertification training each year, but they are quick to jump in and initiate this life-saving care. But once we get there, we can put our Lucas device on, takes it over so we can provide the medications, airway, all those other things we need to do to save lives. And I pulled the data from October ninth, twenty twenty, to the end of twenty twenty-two to see what kind of differences made. And we've seen an increase in lives saved since we've implemented, made this investment and added this equipment to our apparatus. We did write an AFG grant this year to try to obtain more to round out, so we have one on each one of our apparatus. So it doesn't matter who gets on scene first, this would be available to the person in need. So we had a six percent increase with unwitness cardiac arrest, which means nobody saw this person go down, saw that was with them when their heart stopped beating, and a thirteen percent when it was witnessed by a non-responder. So if you're one of those people, that is significant, and those are lives that are saved. So what's next? What is your fire department working on this year? We're going to be continuing focusing on staffing and valuable resources, filling those final staffing positions and getting the maximum number of resources on the road available for response. Continued expansion of community risk reduction assessments and programs, and continued development of the software platforms we purchased, building them up to increase our efficiencies and effectiveness for the services we provide and tracking all of our activity. With that, I will go ahead and take any questions or comments.
Thank you for the update on your annual report. You always do so much in the fire department, and I'm so glad that you're almost out for staffing.
Me too.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Comments? So thank you for the presentation. You brought up the Lucas, Lucas device. And several years ago, I don't even remember what year, two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and nineteen, Councilwoman? Councilwoman Leaks May and I were part of the Oakway class that we got to play firefighter for the day at a training facility. And it was quite, quite an incredible experience. And it was there that we were introduced to the Lucas device and we're both blown away by, you know, what it could do and the impact it would have. We didn't have one of those devices at the time. And when we came back from that, that training session, we were both very adamant that we had to have one. And within a couple of months after that, after that event, we actually got two of them because we were able to get a grant for the second one. So the city bought one. And so you have my full support whenever we need to replace them or if we need additional ones, definitely support that piece of equipment.
Yeah, absolutely. Like you said, typically what happens if somebody's in an upstairs apartment or downstairs or somewhere, when we're moving them, we'd have to stop doing CPR compressions when we move. But that allows it to stay continuous so we can actually create a pulse of that individual in circulation, which is, gives them the best chance of survival. So yes, the support is appreciated. That's why I wanted to highlight it in here. A lot of people don't understand or see the results of the investments, and I felt like it was a notable thing to highlight.
The other thing that I didn't want to touch you based on is our Oakway agreement. Could you share a little bit about what our financial cost is toward that, if there is any, and what our benefit is?
Yeah, absolutely. Being confined up with this report, we pay five thousand dollars a year to be part of Oakway. Like I said, there was ten departments, now there's eleven. We did just have an increase in the membership, if you want to call it that. But with that, what we do is we get those resources, we have those agreements where we all support each other. Like I reported the numbers of how many times they came to help us, how many times we went to help them. We also, with the training, with our specialty response team, those two incidents we had at Gage Chemical for the hazmat, I have six firefighters working a day as my minimum staffing. NFPA fourteen, or seventeen-ten says we should have seventeen firefighters on scene in seven minutes. You see, I'm very short. So we are a very resource-lean department, so those mutual aid agreements are very important. Oakway allows us to seamlessly have those other fire departments cross the boundaries to come to assist us and us assist them. The specialty teams, the hazmat, tech rescue, which involves confined space rescue, rope rescue, collapse rescue, trench rescue, all those, most of our fire departments would not have enough people that could get all those, that specialized training at the top level. So we joined forces. We each all have some, and then we call it that team. So with Gage, we called the hazmat team, and they responded with the trailers and the rest of the equipment that we didn't have. So we get resources purchased by other departments or purchased collectively by Oakway that we all have access to without us carrying the burden of the price tag because that stuff is not cheap. But we get the rights to it and a response to our communities when we need it. So it, it's a very small investment for a huge return with everything we get because it's trailers of equipment that is stationed around in our departments that responds to whatever community needs it.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make another comment. That one, that event that day was probably one of the most exhausting. So thank you for that. It opened some eyes. And another reason why I supported that device is that we actually watched ambulance as it was going and having to watch you all try to do CPR on a moving ambulance that's rocking. Me, at that point, it was a no-brainer, but I have to have this.
Thank you.
Glad to support. And as Councilwoman Pollock has stated, I'm supportive if a more, because it's clearly, based on what you're showing me, the same.
Yeah, so we wrote for two grants that we're waiting here on, the AFG grant, we're trying to get two more Lucas devices and also change over our ambulance cots to Striker. So we're the same as all of our Oakway partners. We're the only department that uses a different device, so we can't borrow that equipment. So we're, that's that one. The other one is a safer grant, which will allow us to add more firefighters to our department, but the cost of firefighters paid for with federal dollars. So allow us to swell our department and additional manning without the burden falling on the city right now. So those are two grants we're waiting hopefully to get good news on that we have out right now.
Cost on our fingers.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Yep.
All right, we are moving on to the call to audience. We set aside thirty minutes for anybody to speak on the topic, and if there's more than thirty minutes required, I can extend that period or lob it on the end at the, at the back end of the regular agenda items. So you're invited to speak for three minutes. Follow the clock here on the wall. And of course, we are dedicated to inclusivity and community, and we ask for respectful and courteous behavior, and we want to make sure that all of our neighbors across all spectrums of beliefs and viewpoints have the ability to share their thoughts in a supported environment and that they feel welcome. So, and remember that you should address issues and not people. Please address council and the mayor rather than staff. So with that, I'm going to open it up with Julia Music. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much. My name's Julia Music. I'm here today to represent the Ferndale Community Foundation, which is located at three hundred East Nine Mile in Ferndale. So I want to talk about our thirteenth annual So I want to talk about our 13th Annual Ferndale Pride Event, which is coming up in just about, I don't know, 12 days, five hours, something like that. I want to tell you a little bit of what's going on. I know I have limited time, so I'm going to talk a little bit fast, but I want to get a lot in. So something that sets our Pride Festival apart is that when it was founded 13 years ago, we decided that no matter what, every year we would give back to charity. We crossed the mark of $330,000 last year, and those charities include Affirmations, Gender Identity Network, Ferndale Community Foundation, Access HIV, Transgender Michigan, Matrix, Human Services, and TG Detroit. So lots of good organizations getting a lot of money in Ferndale from this event. Some other things I wanted to share is that our event has a lot of resources available to people coming. So we have some services related to drug and alcohol, including recovery groups. We have some activities for folks who are looking for things to do with other adults that don't include drinking that day over at the Phoenix area that's sponsored by Mark McMillan. We have a gender-affirming clothing giveaway over at Affirmations, working in partnership with the organization Stanlet Trans. So folks can get free clothing that day should they need some. There's harm reduction services, including Narcan and fentanyl testing strips available during the event. We have some new, new services open, a lactation area, so people breastfeeding, chest-feeding, bottle-feeding, or feeding a baby any other way are welcome to be in this area that's a little bit more closed off. It'll also have lactation specialists on hand to help folks who want to learn more about chest-feeding and breastfeeding. We have some free HIV and STI testing, both on the street and in Affirmations. We have the sensory station, which you heard a little bit about earlier in the evening. And then we have some suicide prevention areas where folks can go and get some one-on-one chat time with folks who have some training and conversations around that topic. So lots of wonderful free things at Pride. Ooh, 40 seconds, I got lots more stuff to say. Our next event is coming up on May 31st. It is Finding Queer Joy, our interface service. The main stage for Pride will kick off at 12:30. That is when opening ceremony starts. At 1 o'clock, our booths open. It'll go all the way through the day. And our headliners are nervous but excited at the Stella Rosa Performance Stage and Deanne over at the MKX Oil Stage. We are just so excited to provide another Pride Festival for everybody. We've also expanded the children's area quite a bit, so if you have some kids, this is the year to bring them and let them have some fun. Six seconds.
Thanks, Julia.
WWFerndalePride.com.
Thanks, Julia. Look forward to another great event.
Hello, my name is Angela Lepard She-Her, and I'm a resident of Ferndale. I live on East Breckenridge, and I'm here and supported the pride flag flying at the City Hall for the month of June. As an out bisexual woman, I appreciate the sign of support from the city in which I live. While support via visibility of the flag is not the end of the advocacy needed by the LGBTQ+ community, especially for my trans siblings, the flag is still meaningful. I want to make clear, based on recent comments at city council meetings, that I'm also here as a person of faith. I was raised as a devout Catholic, attended Catholic university, and received my degree in religious studies. In my upbringing and through my education, I was always taught to advocate for vulnerable folks and lift the voices of historically marginalized people. I was also taught to recognize where I have privilege and where I should be in service to others. My faith alliance was supporting the LGBTQ+ community and our authenticity. In my religious view, my LGBTQ+ family being who God created them to be aligns. As a person of faith, I would like to speak to the complaints of discrimination towards Catholics at the previous council meeting. There is a saying that when you are accustomed to privilege, equality can be confused with oppression. I think that saying would be gracious. However, as a person familiar with bullying, I would remind you of what survivors of abuse know. People with privilege, people with a history of employing abusive tactics to marginalize others will gaslight us by claiming discrimination or a lack of inclusivity or that they're acting out of love, when the goal is really about maintaining power through the depreciation of others. Please recognize the tactics to harm the LGBTQ+ community under the guise of religion are not acts of faith but of spiritual abuse. All faith traditions have some form of the golden rule. Those people that remove those religion, forgive me, remove their religion from the foundation of respecting others are not representing my faith. I feel confident in saying that I am not the only person of faith that will provide you with this opinion. Again, in the end, it doesn't matter because religion should not dictate laws, nor it should dictate what you do. However, based on previous comments, I wanted you to have the perspective of somebody who is a person of faith and active in their current faith community. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Hi, Paul.
Hi. I always keep following Angela. I do want to thank the mayor and his council for their stance regarding the recent request to raise a religious flag in front of City Hall. In June 2020, the Archdiocese of Detroit issued a statement regarding Church Militant. In part, the statement reads, quote, "The Archdiocese of Detroit unequivocally condemns the offensive language used in reference to Archbishop Gregory, who was Archbishop Washington DC, and advises the faithful that Church Militant is not affiliated with, endorsed, or recommended by the Archdiocese of Detroit. It is not recognized as a church apostolate. Furthermore, this organization formally operated under the name Real Catholic TV from its headquarters in Ferndale, Michigan until 2011, when it received notification from the Archdiocese of Detroit that it lacked the authorization required under canon church law to identify or promote itself as Catholic. It subsequently changed its name to Church Militant." I also want to remind this council that this organization is also on the Southern Poverty Center's 2021 list of hate groups for the state of Michigan. And in light of the recent Supreme Court decisions, 20-1800 Trutlef v. Boston, while this case might not directly affect our city currently, it did hinge on the two doctrines of government speech and/or private expression. So I would encourage the city to keep refining the policies and procedures that reflect the majority of residents of this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Phil Lombard, and I live on West Drayton Avenue. I asked the council if they would please address a quality of life issue, and that is noise. I have three areas of concern: noise from vehicles such as cars, motorcycles, and minibikes; noise from festivals such as the recent Cinco de Mayo Festival; and lawn machines such as lawn mowers. Cars and motorcycles make excessive noise on Woodbury, I-696, and on my street, West Drayton as well. Our street also has minibikes that seemingly are ridden without mufflers. Over the Cinco de Mayo Festival weekend, I heard music at my house, which is 2,800 feet from the southeast corner of Woodbury and Nine Mile. I don't understand why all the residents in a half-mile radius need to hear the music provided for festival attendees. My last concern regards the use of industrial-quality lawn mowers that landscape companies use. The sound from these huge machines should not exceed those of residential lawn mowers. That's it. Thank you for listening to my concerns, and I hope you address them.
Thanks, Phil.
Does that mean I get the rest of the 25 minutes?
Sorry. Start over. Welcome.
I'd like to apologize for any disruption in my...
Worries.
First thing I'd like to, meaning that the chief, I just caught the end of your presentation, but excellent work, and I appreciate that you're recognizing the officers. And I always, I always like to include the support team around the officers. And, you know, I used to tell, in Southfield, for 20 years, I told the officers and police where to go when I was in Detroit. If I told the police where to go, they, anyways, I was a dispatcher, so always recognize your dispatches as well, as well as social workers and other, you know, wise social workers. Reference to fire department. I wonder, with all the money, federal money, you know, state grants and that, is there anything? I grew up in Seven and Wood. We got two viaducts there. One goes under, well, Seven and John R., they go under the railroad tracks. Is there any way, logistically, we've got the high-tension wires, and, you know, but is there any, is there, does anybody know if there's been any proposals to, at least along Nyma, from a public safety standpoint, to come up with some kind of solution, either over the railroad tracks? Or I'm thinking it might be easier over the railroad tracks, but, you know, than you get the high-tension wires. So if, if not, if that's something somebody could, you know, I'm willing to do any, you know, legwork as much as conceivable in my state. But anyways, so I was just hoping, especially with the current, you know, I'm sure we could probably buy for some grants or something, get, you know, federal and state aid, and maybe in connection internationally, because we have, you know, our neighbor here, Cross Railroad Tracks. Now, on the railroad, the gentleman back here mentioned noise. I, when we moved in over 20 years ago, it was just a switching yard over here. We have the same retaining wall. The switching yard was just the freight cars. There was no intermodal. I forget the title of it. There's, there was no, there was no box, there are no, you know, the shipping containers. They're stacked up, you know, kind of an eyesore. You know, we've got I-75 going in here, you know, the new I-75, you go up just north of 696 on the southbound side. I would like to see a wall like that built or something. Something might be cheaper is just to, you know, bury, bury at least one deep down shipping container, fill it with dirt. And again, you know, you want to bolt them together or whatever, but it might be a solution. I'm sorry, is my time up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Your three minutes is up. Can you wrap it up real quick?
Um, that's about it. I'd just like, I'm going to, basically, I'll wrap it up real quick. We want a new wall, and we want Canada to pay for it.
Okay.
Because Canadian National.
Okay.
All right, I'm not, I'm not...
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else for public comment?
Hi, Rolanda.
Hi, how are you? 261 West Maplehurst, Rolanda Kelly. As a member of the LGBT+ community in Ferndale, I'm proud to stand here today and ask for your support and approval of the resolution to declare June of 2023 as Pride Month. Ferndale is known for its welcoming and inclusive environment for the LGBTQ+ community, but we cannot forget the struggles and discrimination that many of us have faced. A Pride Month is a time to celebrate our history and our progress and our resilience. By passing a Pride Month resolution, Ferndale can show its continued commitment to celebrating and supporting its LGBTQ+ residents. This resolution would not only be a symbol of our city's values, but it would also send a message of hope and acceptance to the LGBTQ+ individuals everywhere. Our urge you to vote in favor of this resolution and stand with us in solidarity during this important month. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Oscar.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for having us this evening here, also to express my support in resolutions 7C and 7D, resolution declaring June as a gay pride month, and resolution to display the pride flag outside of Ferndale City Hall. If you approve these resolutions, our community will continue to live with dignity, integrity, joy, and courage. Thank you so much. I hope you guys do it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Public comment? All right, Mr. Rainbow, Superman.
I'm here. I'm Gordon Matson, and I'm the Ferndale Pride mascot. I think it's very important to have pride, not only to remind the younger generation where the older LGBTQ people have come from, because if it wasn't for our older LGBTQ, the younger generation now would not have what they have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. I look forward to seeing you out there. Hi, welcome.
Hello, thank you, everyone. Hi, I'm Heidi, a Ferndale resident, parent, in the public schools as well, and I'm here to ask you to support item 7B, the approval of the resolution proclaiming June 2nd as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Ferndale. As you know, this is an issue that affects all of us. Recently, in Ferndale public schools, well, within the past few months this school year, many of our schools were on lockdown. It's just an issue that affects all of us for many different reasons. We had a situation here in Ferndale recently as well with someone threatening us at a peaceful protest. So I just urge you to, to declare this because it's important and an issue that affects us all. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it for public comment. And just wanted to say that I am part of the mayor's for every town. I think everybody here follows every town in some manner, and we have signed in the past cities against gun violence, and so we're happy to do that again. All right, so next up, moving on to item number six on the agenda, the public hearing, and we only have one item tonight, and it's 6A, is consideration of a special land use applications for 3291 Bermuda. And our city planner, Kyle Bryce, is going to introduce this.
Good evening, Council. I'm here before you for a special land use for 3291 Bermuda. That's the overall project site. So I do have the existing conditions map up on the screen right now. So right now, we are looking at the north side of Bermuda, roughly where it runs up next to 696. So this map is a little outdated, but here on the east side, this is where the flatset Iron Ridge is going up. That's the 94-unit apartment complex. So this is the parking lot on the west side, if you are familiar with what I'm talking about. This straddles the boundary of our neighbor Pleasant Ridge. So this western boundary is actually the city boundary that goes along here. So this is part of the overall Iron Ridge development, which has been going through multiple phases for quite a few years here. It's a mixed-use development, so there's a lot of, I guess, commercial and industrial and even retail space here on the Pleasant Ridge side, which is accessed through this road here. And then on the Ferndale side, of course, we do have the apartments, we do have some additional industrial and mixed-use space further along down Bermuda. Here's a basic site plan. North is looking to the left on this map. What they're proposing for this project area is an overhaul of the parking lot. So it, for the most part, the parking lot is to remain as a parking lot, but they are significantly decreasing the impervious area by about 29%. They are bringing everything up to current ordinance standards. It's a little haphazard out there. They're adding a significant amount of landscaping, and they're adding a pocket park on the corner. We do some really nice renderings to go through with that. But that all went through the site plan review with the planning commission, and it was approved conditionally. So what I'm here for tonight is the existing building here is proposed to be a carryout restaurant with limited indoor seating as well as some outdoor seating. This is a special land use in the M1 Light Industrial Zoning District. So again, that's really it. It's just on this restaurant. Restaurant was included during the site plan discussion, so it does have proper parking and everything like that. That's all I have by way of an introduction. I'd like to bring up the applicants. We'd start with the architect, but we do have the owner here as well. We'd start with the architect, but we do have the, the owner here as well.
Oh, yes, yeah, this is what you sent me. Good evening, everybody. Jason Krieger with Krieger Cloud Architects. I have Craig Singer with Ownership and Mike Gold, the civil engineer here. And as mentioned, we did go through the site plan approval process. We're here today really for the restaurant. We brought the presentation from the planning commission here and we thought we'd just take a few minutes just to go over it. We don't want to belabor it because Kyle did a great job giving you some background, but we thought we'd just give everybody kind of like an update of where we are and then answer any, any kind of questions that you may have. So I think everybody's familiar with the site. This, these are some images as how the site looks today. This right here is an existing two-story office building. Part of this proposal is to also renovate that office building and improve it, and there are no users for that yet, but the idea is to make that part of this overall development and beautify the site. The image here on the right, I don't know if you guys can see the mouse or anything, but to the right is how it looks today with a half wall that's in horrible shape. Our proposal is to tear that down, green it up, make it look really nice. This is really the last piece of the development, if you will, in order to complete the site and, you know, finalize it and get tenants on board. So as mentioned, this is the current site plan and there's additional green space that's gonna be along the east. The existing, I forgot how many square feet it is, like, looks like it might be eleven hundred square foot. Building is vacant. The, the reason why we're here tonight is because Ownership would like to prep that for a restaurant use or some kind of food use. There is no tenant slated, they just want to have it teed up so as they market it, they can market it, in other words, for that use. The one thing that we do want to point out, we have some renderings of it, is the, it'd be the northeast corner, which is right here. Currently, it's a parking lot and it's kind of a haphazard parking lot. It's not striped that I can recall. And, you know, we looked at different uses for it and it's just, it's really noisy there with the expressways. So our idea is turn it into a pocket park that's mostly plantings. The idea is to create a nice gateway coming into the development, so there's signage and really just green it up and if folks want to sit out there, they can. The other piece would be to improve this two-story office building. You'll see in the renderings where we are going to square off a part of the building and then put a really nice mural there. Ownership has a wonderful muralist that they want to get to do something, I guess it's a world-renowned individual, and Craig can speak to that if you guys have any questions. There is one thing that we are proposing to do. This is a floor plan of the current building. We're proposing a outdoor cooler that would be on the west southwest corner. We would screen it completely so that you wouldn't see it. It would match the building and it would just kind of blend in with the overall development. These are some site plans from the site plan approval process. We're happy to go over these in detail. This is the site as it exists today. This is the building in question. This is the two-story office building right here that we are going to renovate. And the site right now, it's just all concrete. It's being used, there's lots of storage, shipping containers, et cetera. All right, our plan is to green it up. So this is our proposed site plan. You can see the pocket park that we're proposing that's on the northeast corner. This building here would hopefully turn into a food use with some outdoor dining that would be on the east and then the cooler would be on the west. And then this right here is the two-story office building that would be renovated and improved with windows, different entryways, et cetera. And then these are just other views. This is looking, this will be looking to the northeast. It's proposed. And this is looking to the northwest, current and then proposed. This is the two-story office building that would be improved. And here's a, a view looking at a proposed mural. That's the last slide. So we're here for questions.
I forgot to say my four-step process of the, of the public hearing. There is a four-step process to this. You just finished step one with staff presentations and applicants and we move on now to the public comment period so that council can hear what the public has to say and then can follow up with questions after.
Great.
Thank you. We'll bring you back in a minute. All right, I'm gonna open up for public comment. Does anybody here like to make public comment about this special land use application specifically about the outdoor seating for a future restaurant? All right. Seeing none, we're gonna close public comment and bring you back up and open it up to council for any questions of fact-finding for Kyle and/or the applicant. Opening it up for any of you? All right, well, then we would need a motion to proceed?
I, I would just share.
Or do you want to give some comment?
Yeah, I would just share that this was presented to the planning commission several weeks ago. Planning commission had very, very few issues regarding the, the project. It passed unanimously. I think we're all very excited to have that, that corner transformed. And I think the use of this, this restaurant is gonna be very welcoming, especially to that new housing development right there on Bermuda, as well as, you know, our neighbors across the expressway in Royal Oak, that neighborhood as well. So, yeah, I think this is a great, a great project for that corner.
Excellent. All right, well, we need a motion to proceed.
I move after a properly noticed public hearing and the unanimous recommendation of the planning commission that city council approve the special land use application of a carryout restaurant with limited indoor seating and outdoor seating for three three five one Bermuda Street, parcel two four dash two five dash two seven dash two zero one dash zero zero five, based on plans dated April 11th, 2023, and adopts the findings of the planning commission that the request meets and satisfies the review standards set forth in twenty four dash two seven three of the zoning ordinance.
Moved by Polika and supported by McCloskey. I just want to say, I was just over there on my bike, if any of your workers say there's a woman on her bike taking pictures of your development, that was me. I'm really excited to see the transformation of this area continue. I think you were impacted by the pandemic as well. And so.
Much so.
Slow rolling into making progress, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Polika?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Piana?
Yes, and that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. I'm going to read it in entirety and council may choose their bidding. Seven A, approval of the May 8th, 2023 meeting minutes. Seven B, approval of resolution proclaiming June 2nd as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Ferndale. Seven C, approval of the resolution declaring June 2023 as Gay Pride Month. Seven D, approval of the resolution to display the pride flag outside Ferndale City Hall. Seven E, approval of payment to C N Grand Trunk Western in the amount of nine thousand three and ten for railroad crossing and signal maintenance. Seven F, approve our resolution to recommend qualified licenses for Ferndale Social District. Seven G, approval of the proclamation designating May 15th to 21st as National Public Works Week. Seven H, approval of Ferndale, Ferndale Dream Cruise Rock and Loud Entertainment Performance Agreements for August 18th through the 19th, 2023. Seven I, approval to submit payment, payment to most dependable fountains in the amount of five thousand two hundred and forty-five for a drinky fountain to be placed at Harding Park. Seven J, approval of the resolution for the city's request for reimbursement from Oakland County under the West Nile Buyers Program and authorize for the city clerk to sign. Seven K, approval of the MOU between the city of Ferndale and the Ferndale Public Schools for summer camp, for summer school camp services to be rendered during the summer of 2023 and authorization for the Parks and Recreation Director, oh my God, to decide the agreement. Seven L, approval to backfill the three police officer positions. Seven M, approval of the 2023-24 city fee schedule. And seven N, approval of bills and payrolls submitted by the finance director and subject to review by the council finance committee.
Through the chair, I move that we, we approve the consent agenda with the following changes. Moving seven D, the resolution to display the pride flag outside City Hall, to correct specific verbiage within the resolution, and move seven M, the 2023-24 city fee schedule to address a missing item.
All right, so the proposal is to remove seven D and seven M to the regular agenda item. Seven D will become eight C and seven M will become eight M.
Eight D, you mean?
Sorry, is that right? Eight, no, eight D, sorry, alphabet, eight D.
Not even nine o'clock yet.
I know. I'm sorry, I did not catch, I, did you second that? Okay, it was moved by Polika and seconded by Bruner James.
Polika?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes. All right, we are now moving on to the regular, oh, you wanted to read something?
Yeah, I did too.
Oh, you did too?
So the pro, okay. This proclamation, the 2023 city proclamation, proclamation declaring June 2nd as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Ferndale. To honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence. And to declare that we as a country must do more to end this public health crisis. Every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence in more than 250, average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And Michigan has 1,382 gun deaths every year with a rate of 13.7 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state one, excuse me, 16.8 billion each year, of which 380.5 million is paid by taxpayers. Michigan has the 25th highest rate of gun death in the United States. And gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And cities across the nation, including in Ferndale, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions and protecting public safety and communities they serve as, as mayor's highest responsibility. And support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And mayors and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best, are the most familiar with the local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicide and non-fatal shootings across the country. Increase, our, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines and an increase in city gun violence. In January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15 on June 2nd, 2023. To recognize the 26th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1997. People across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to, one, Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and two, the loved ones of those victims. And the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. If anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd, the first Friday in June in 2023, help raise awareness about gun violence. By wearing orange on June 2nd, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence, honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and to encourage responsible gun ownership, help keep other families and communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Melanie Piana of Ferndale declares the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Do you want a picture?
Yes.
I'm gonna allow it. Yes. Do you want to come behind here and stand here?
Yeah.
Yeah, hide your, hide your popcorn. Thanks for being here. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, and Councilman Polika wanted to read the.
Resolution for Gay Pride Month. The city of Ferndale is a community that values its diversity as demonstrated by those who live, work, and gather in our city. We, the city council, support the rights, freedoms, equality, and inclusion of those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, asexual, and others, LGBTQIA+. We know that the city continuously benefits from LGBTQIA+ persons who live in and contribute to the quality of life in Ferndale and throughout the state of Michigan. We affirm June as the month when LGBTQIA+ people worldwide and their straight allies recognize the historical Stonewall riots of 1969 as where the stand for human rights and dignity began, where gay men and women, transsexuals and drag queens stood up to injustice and unfair treatment. We proudly acknowledge that the city embraces its diversity and that everyone has the right to live life without prejudice and discrimination based on age, gender, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges. Therefore, be it resolved that the city council recognizes and celebrates June 2023 as Gay Pride Month in the city of Ferndale and encourages all residents to learn about the historical LGBTQIA+ movement and that a copy of this resolution be sent to neighboring cities that border the great city of Ferndale, to the executive of the county of Oakland, to the governor of the state of Michigan, and our U.S. representatives, to the House of Representatives, and our senators.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the regular agenda item and the first out of four is eight A, approve appointment agreement with Summer Reilly for the position of DVA Acting Executive Director.
Through the chair, I'm happy to introduce this. The current executive director, Lena Stephens, will be moving out of the director position. And last week, the Ferndale Downtown Development Authority did vote to authorize Summer Reilly to act as interim executive director of the DVA while the recruitment occurs. So I wanted to just bring that DVA board recommendation to council on the regular agenda. And here's Summer, if you don't know her, I'm sure you do, but Summer, if you can come in, just give your brief bio to the many watching YouTube.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, mayor and council. It's nice to be here this evening. I won't bore you too much. I came into the city almost 15 years ago now and it's been a place that I still miss that I don't live today, but thankfully I can call it my home because I work here and I'm honestly here more than I am at home. Currently as engagement manager, which my title is, downtown Ferndale is very important to me and this transition period in, I really hope is as seamless as possible and engagement remains the same. I've had the pleasure of working with the previous three directors, a deputy director, all over the course of the past eight years. And during the last three to almost four years, the businesses in the world have experienced some of the hardest most of us have ever seen with the COVID pandemic being present during most of them. Lena has not only been a fearless leader to me, to all of us, in the midst of this change, but she has also been an outstanding member who has encouraged me to be confident and has empowered me to succeed in any way I can. Lena is not only my boss, but she's most importantly included me in every step of the process, every policy, every program our department has implemented in the course of her time as executive director. our department has implemented in the course of her time as Executive Director. I'm very honored to have this opportunity to be the acting director for the Downtown Development Authority here in the city of Ferndale. I'm confident that with my experience, knowledge, and overall work ethic that I've gained in my professional career over, I'm not saying how many years, will meet the demands of the DDA Board of Directors, the city of Ferndale, and downtown Ferndale as a whole. I'm looking forward to seeing what these next few months and the recruitment process takes place. And I'm available to answer any questions now or in the future. It's an open-door policy. I thank you all.
Thank you. Um, usually I ask each liaison to introduce their section, but I'm the liaison to the DDA. So I'll just let you know that the board had full confidence in Summer to be the interim Executive Director and approved the agreement as well as the salary. And is excited to work with the HR department at the city to help find the full executive director. There's any questions? Open it up to Joe or Summer.
Through the chair, my only question is because inside the item background, there are three distinct items listed.
But we only have one.
Although two of them say do not require council action, so.
Yes, so that looks like a holdover from the DDA Board of Directors packet where they actually had to approve motion two, one, two, and three. But for our role as city council, we approve the executive director. So that is why motion one is applicable to us, and the other two were already taken by the DDA board.
In that case, I move to approve the appointment agreement for the position of DDA Acting Executive Director. It's submitted by HR Director.
Moved by Bruner-James and supported by Leaks-May.
James.
Yes.
Leaks-May.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Polica.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes. Look forward to working with you more closely in the interim period, Summer. All right, we're moving on to the next regular agenda item is 8B, Presentation on Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund for Lead Service Line Replacement.
Yes. Good evening tonight, Mayor and council.
So some of you on council may remember a very similar presentation to this one that I gave in June of 2020. So I apologize if a lot of this looks the same. A lot of this format is related to the way that the state of Michigan requires us to put these plans together. So tonight, what I'm going to be doing is reviewing a project plan that we would like to submit to the state of Michigan's Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy for continued lead service line replacement program. So a quick overview, state of Michigan adopted their lead and copper rule in 2018, which requires that communities do additional water sampling for lead and copper. In addition to that, they identify all the material type by 2025, actually begin replacing lead service lines or galvanized service lines that were previously connected to lead in 2021. And the expense to those replacements is required of the actual public utility themselves. So in our case, it is the city of Ferndale's Water and Sewer Fund. And this may be familiar because we're currently paying for lead service line replacements under a drinking water revolving loan fund funds from the state of Michigan. So here is what a typical diagram of a water service line looks like. So you'll see on the left of the screen, you have the city's water main. That blue portion of the, you know, water service line itself is the city's portion of the water service line here in the city of Ferndale. And then that yellow portion to the right, between the curb stop and the meter, is the private portion of the service line that is typically the responsibility of the private property owner. As part of this program, any portion of that service line there that contains lead, we have been replacing and we are also required to replace. So what have we been doing over the last few years in terms of compliance? So we have been in compliance with the state of Michigan. And then this year for 2022, as you will see in our CCR, our Consumer Confidence Report for Drinking Water that we'll put out, we did not have a lead action level exceedance. In addition to that, we did, we have submitted our preliminary distribution systems material inventory. We did that in January of 2020. Right now, we are working on additional verification work as part of a drinking water asset management grant that we were awarded by Eagle. We are really into the thick of that right now. We are using those funds to basically take a sample size of our service lines within the city of Ferndale, doing verifications on those, and then we'll be taking the information that we gain from that random sample, applying it to attributes like the age of the water main, age of the property, in order to develop a kind of statistical, for lack of better words, best guesstimate on what it is that we have across our entire system. So we're hoping to have that completed. Everything goes well probably by the end of the summer. And then we will be going and updating our preliminary distribution systems inventory. And it'll give us a lot better idea of what we actually have in terms of lead service lines, copper, and so on. Whereas right now, we do have quite a bit of unknown in our system. So on top of that, we have actually been actively replacing lead service lines. So since we started replacing lead service lines in 2021, we have replaced approximately 1,350. I say approximately because that's pretty much a moving target every single day. In 2021, we replaced 555 lead service lines. We replaced 611 in 2022. And as of the end of last week, we've replaced 200 so far this year in 2023. So we're moving along at a really good pace. You know, we have been capturing all this information of the work that we're doing in our GIS, in addition to always looking at our budgeting as we move forward with this program. So this is a snapshot of what you saw when we reported out on our 2022 lead service line replacement program. You'll see the purple dots are where we did work and replacements in 2021. Red is 2022. And the blue is either what we have already done so far this year or what we intend to do for 2023. And then as we, as we knock these out, we, you know, are thinking about, you know, what's 2024, what's 2025, and so on going to look like for us in terms of the replacements that we're going to complete. So at that time, you'll see here our LCR compliance. We submitted our preliminary distribution system materials inventory. And these are what our numbers said. Now, these numbers are going to change a lot once we finalize our verification work that we've been doing this year. But you'll see that that big number of 8,300 unknowns. So what we're doing with this work this year is taking that 8,300 of unknowns and based on what we're seeing in terms of in the houses, under the ground at the curb stop, we'll be assigning properties, you know, this property's likelihood of containing a lead service line is at 85, 90% probability. So we will continue to work that down as we are also required to do so by 2025. But we're looking to have that, a good handle on that, you know, late 2023, early 2024, because it'll just help us do a lot better on our planning side of things. In addition, a few years ago, the city did join South Oakland County Water Authority on an RFP for service line replacements. It's kind of a pay-as-you-go option for us to help, you know, meet the required number of replacements that we need to do each year. So we did utilize that contract in 2021, and we replaced approximately 200 lead service lines under that pay-as-you-go option. And then what we have been doing, the bulk of our work under, is the current Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund of $10 million that we have. And so far, since we started doing that work in June of 2021, we've replaced a little over 1,000 lead service lines, approximately 1,100 as of today. So we've been doing a lot of work. We've roughly spent between some verification work that we've done under that loan, which we were allowed to do, and the actual replacements themselves. To date, we've spent approximately $6.5 million with another three and a half to go. Likely what we'll end up doing is taking some of the verification dollars that we set aside and making a request to Eagle to move those verification dollars over to replacement dollars to stretch those numbers out. We originally anticipated that we'd be able to replace approximately 1,200 lead service lines with this original $10 million loan. Once all said and done, after you factor in, excuse me, some of the verification work that we've done, the road restoration, the lawn restoration, and so on, we'll probably end up replacing 14, between 1,400 and 1,500 lead service lines with these, with this funding. So we would like to continue on doing that, and that's why we are here tonight. And we're talking about a new project plan. So what exactly is the state of Michigan's Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy's Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund? It was a program established with the Safe Drinking Water Act. What the DWRF does is it provides low-interest loans for planning, design, constructing, eligible drinking water requirements. So this program's administered by Eagle. Every month, under our current loan, what we do is we submit a report to Eagle. It says, this is the work we've done, this is how much we've spent. We submit that to the state, and they reimburse us for those dollars. We are under a 20-year loan repayment. One of the nice things about this program is the interest rates that are associated with this funding. So the current interest rate right now on a DWRF fund is 1.875%, which is and can tend to be more favorable than the private market. In addition to that, there is some principal forgiveness that is made available. So that really is dependent on the funding that is authorized. But the nice thing is, is over the last few years, there has been quite a bit of federal dollars that have been allocated to further support these programs at the state level to give out additional loan dollars for drinking water projects, not only across the state of Michigan, but across the country as well. So really what this presentation is today is to go over the project plan and think of the project plan as an application. So we intend to submit this project plan as an application to the state of Michigan to see if we can potentially get awarded the ability to move forward in the process of obtaining an additional loan to continue on our work. So as a part of the project plan, what we do within that project plan that is attached to this agenda item is we discuss the characteristics of our system. You know, the long-term system needs, whether it's service line replacements, water main work, other capital projects, do an analysis on what the alternatives are, you know, environmental impacts. And then a part of that also is a public presentation. This is a little bit different than the past presentation that was given. That was a public hearing. Since then, the state has changed some of the administrative rules as it pertains to submitting for a DWRF fund. So this is more like a presentation than an actual public hearing. You know, as part of that, you know, the public plan or project plan, excuse me, was posted on the city's website under an announcement page. Residents are encouraged to give feedback, comment if they would like, you know, feel any questions and so on about the actual project plan, the work that we intend to do with this funding, if we can move forward in the process. So under this DWRF fund, the scope of that work is for lead service line replacements. And what we're looking to do is we'll do some field verification work, but we'll also be, you know, hammering out our existing verification work. So ideally, keeping that verification work to a minimum on this next round of funding so we can maximize the replacement work that we actually intend to do. And, you know, there are alternatives to moving forward with another project plan. You know, we can do nothing, rehabilitate the system, replace the existing system, or we can take a regional look on things. So in terms of no action, it's not really an option for us as we are required to replace at least 5% of our lead service lines per year over a 20-year period. This would result in a violation of the Safe Drinking Water Act in addition to increasing the potential exposure to lead for those on our system. Rehabilitating the system is also not feasible as we need to actually do full replacements. We can't rehabilitate the lead service lines. So the most preferred and feasible alternative for us is replace the existing system. So that's actually physically replacing the lead service lines and the galvanized services that were previously connected to lead throughout our system. In terms of a regional approach, it's not necessarily applicable whether we're a part of a regional entity, like operating our system itself. The replacements of those lead service lines would still be required. What we're looking to do is apply for $12 million of funding under this loan. Our loan that we're currently working under is a $10 million loan. We have bumped that up to $12 million as we do anticipate in going back out to bid for this work that prices would come in higher than what we are currently under. A lot of that due to increases in material costs, fuel, and so on, in addition to labor that's driving those. So basically, what we're looking to do is spend approximately $3.7 million per year over a three-year period to complete this work. Part of what is required of us in this project plan is to do a present worth analysis on this. So when you factor in the loan amount, the salvage after 20 years, and the interest that will accrue during that construction period, you're looking at a present worth cost of $6 million. To the right here, you'll see how we factored in that present worth cost once we factor in interest rates, the EPA discount interest rate, you know, 2022 budgeting, our 20-year planning, and so on. So if approved, if approved, and we do move forward in this process, as we are doing right now, our service line replacements are paid for out of our Water and Sewer Fund. And we've been working, you know, probably for, I think, five years or so now since I started working for the city at budgeting for these service line replacements. So our current DWRF loan, you know, that was something that we planned for in advance. As we've been going through these capital improvement planning and our budgeting over the last few years, we have been also looking at doing another large round of funding to continue heavy-handed on our service line replacements. And that's what we have been doing and working with finance on that. If we're, we are able to, you know, submit for a project plan in addition to actually having the ability to be awarded some funding, go through the bid process, bid award, and so on. go through the bid process, bid award, and so on, obtaining this, these dollars would allow us to continue replacing lead service lines at a higher rate than what is required by the state of Michigan. And we're very confident that we will be able to do so. And really, the original intent with our 2020/2021 DWRF funding was knowing that that $10 million would really get us a good start, but there's going to be additional dollars that we will have to contribute to continue replacing lead service lines. So, in terms of project impacts, there's not a ton of impacts. Most of the impacts are in the short term. You know, it's going to help us further reduce the potential for adverse health effects due to lead in drinking water. You know, it does increase some jobs on the construction side of things. There is noise, dust, traffic impacts that are typical of any construction project that we typically have going around town. In addition to while we're completing work, residents will not have access to water for typically around three hours. In terms of the long-term side of things, you know, as with the short term, further reducing risk, meeting our regulatory requirements, increasing our rate of removals, and we estimate that with this round of funding, excuse me, we'll be able to replace approximately 1,400 lead service lines. And we really don't anticipate any negative impacts as a part of this work. The work that we're doing, you know, you can attach a life cycle of 40 years to that new service line. And if, working in an older community like Ferndale has taught me anything, if you're lucky, you'll get 100 years out of that service line in your property. So, we would really like to continue doing that work. So, like I touched on, you know, with those project impacts, you're really talking about inconvenience. And it's a few-week period. We do our best to target our work on specific blocks and get that work done as quick as we possibly can. We'll float here and there, but we want to really be in and out of a block if everything goes well. No more than four or five weeks for that disruption that we're causing. And as always, there's always the possibility of construction damage or accidents on both the public and private side of things. You know, knock on wood, we haven't had any claims associated with the work that we're doing. And a large, a large part of that is the work that our contractors have been doing is good work. And our project manager, Jeff Weeks, has also been doing a great job in steering this project forward. So, we're trying to mitigate the disturbance side of things as much as possible where we're either doing pipe bursting or directional drilling. So, we are minimizing the amount of excavation work that we have to do in order to do these replacements, and we will continue to do that. You know, and, you know, we do our best not to disturb as much vegetation as possible. If we do, you know, we try and work with residents in getting some other plant material moved if they do have a lot of landscaping, get that replanted, lawn restoration, and all of that. So, outside of that, there's not really any anticipated adverse long-term impacts as part of this project. And then, what you're seeing here is just, you know, the schedule for this project. Up at the top here, we're at the public presentation side of things. We posted a notice earlier this month that we're going to be having this presentation. You know, next would be a council resolution, actually adopting our project plan, approving that. And that allows us to submit the project plan itself to Eagle come June. So, like I touched on, this would occur over three phases. You know, the 2024, 2025 construction season, and then down the subsequent years as well, with hoping to wrap up all this work come 2027. And if not, what we would do is we would ask for an extension so we can continue to just spend down the funds. So, in summary, the state of Michigan's mandated that all public water supplies begin replacing their lead service lines. And that began in 2021. If you don't get an exception, you need to have all that work completed by 2024, or no, 2041, excuse me. So, with this plan, we're estimating that we'll be able to replace another 1,400 lead service lines. And that'll bring us up to approximately 3,000 service lines replaced by 2027. And this project is not only to ensure that we continue to prevent lead exposure, but we're also meeting the expectations and requirements set by the state of Michigan. So, if all goes well, council approves tonight, we get the ability to be awarded some funding, have a successful bid, bid award. We would potentially start construction and spending down these dollars in the spring of 2024. So, we're doing a really good job of spending that down right now under our current DWRF fund, and we're really looking forward to continue spending that down. And with that, we do have additional resources on the city's webpage, you know, whether it's the city of Ferndale, Oakland County Health Department, or the state of Michigan, with a lot of good information as it relates to lead in drinking water, lead service lines, the replacement program, what to do about testing. And then, in addition to that, you know, there are some simple ways to reduce potential exposure for those that do have a lead service line. You know, that's replacing older faucets, that's flushing cold water if the water's been stagnant for six or more hours, installing an ANSI-certified 53 water filter that's rated for actual lead reduction, and making sure that you're cleaning out your aerators, you know, once a quarter or however often you clean your home. Those are, those are really the best practices to help reduce that exposure. So, with that, I will answer questions. I do want to make note that as part of this process, if you are a resident still in attendance with us, there's a little sign-in sheet at the back table. If you could just put your name and email down that we can submit along with proof that we posted this prior to this public meeting, had this public meeting, had the resolution. It's more so kind of housekeeping for us as we submit this project plan. So, with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thanks, Dan. Very comprehensive overview and presentation and update about where we were and where we're going. Are there any questions from council?
Through the chair, yes. So, the infrastructure bill that was passed last year, will that, yeah, it was passed last year, will that have any impact on us to be reimbursed for this money that we may be spending? Or we have no idea?
It depends. So, not necessarily reimburseals. How it comes for, let's say, additional funding or to lower the city's costs is in terms of actual forgiveness on your loan. The state recently went through some rule changes as it relates to overburdened communities and how calculations are made in which a community can achieve an overburdened status to save a couple of dollars on their loan funding. Unfortunately, the way that that shakes down, a lot of that has to do with median family income. And in the city of Ferndale, right now, our median family income is too high for us to qualify for an overburdened status. I have made public comment to Eagle as they helped, as they went through the change process and their overburdened status and that, you know, not only should we look at the general demographics of the community, but also take a look at, you know, the capital that communities are spending to do this work and have that factor into play. Unfortunately, that is not included in the most recent definition change. So, where we would save money is in terms of some principal loan forgiveness. On our current DWRF loan, we're saving about $400,000 in principal forgiveness, which, if you think about it, is a decent chunk of change, but it isn't that much on $10 million. So, a lot of the money that's coming down with the infrastructure bill is additional dollars that are made available for the state to put out on them. But if any developments do come, and there is, like, let's say, some free dollars that we can go after, we're definitely going to go after those.
I know you will. It's just irritating that. Because we're being proactive, we get screwed.
Or another way to frame it is, more residents have fewer lead lines sooner. I understand what you're saying.
Through the chair, if I might just add a thing. I just wanted to supplement some of your remarks about homeowners who are checking their lines for lead. And there are resources out there so they check the portions of your service line that are visible, but bear in mind that a good chunk is not invisible. Sometimes there are parts that we don't have access to that could have lead filtering or, you know, parts of the service line could have lead. Most homes in Ferndale were built, like, between 1920 and 2021. If you fall within that category, assume that you have lead somewhere in your line. Affirmatively know otherwise, and take steps to reduce your exposure. Dan highlighted, you know, the really important steps, but don't forget to change those filters regularly, you know, put it on the same cycle. If you're using a pitcher, picture regularly to avoid bacteria buildup. It seems like an obvious thing, but, you know, we're all busy and aren't paying really close attention to things like our water. And really, really, really important, do not boil your water. Boiling water will not eliminate lead. In fact, it will increase the concentration because as the water boils off, the lead's not going anywhere. And also, if you are drinking filtered water, don't forget, especially if you have little ones in your house, they need to be getting fluoride through other means. Make sure that you're flushing or forth. It's impacts my house, which is why all of these things are on the list of things that we do at my house. We have a little one, so.
If I may, through the chair, I just wanted to ask if, because this procedure is still going forward and there are still houses that have not been, lead lines have been replaced. Does DPW, do you still have the filters for residents to get them from you as opposed to having to go to?
Right now, we do not have any in stock. So, we've been directing folks to the Southview location of Oakland County Health Department for those, in addition to replacement filters themselves, too.
I just want to say, you know, I've been really impressed with how the city and DPW and your team have been managing this program since it started. I have 100% confidence in all of you to do this work. And it's been impressive what you've been able to do and exceeding your goals or the goals of the state and setting, you know, new goals for the city. I hope that our project manager is still with us. And I know he's been amazing. I can't, I'm sorry, what was his name?
Jeff Weeks.
Jeff Weeks, yeah. He's been quite an extraordinary partner in all of this as well. Please send my regards.
Will do, and Jeff is looking forward to another big round of funding. Keeps him busy.
We hardly get, I mean, I literally get no complaints. I get more praises about this program than anything else. And just thank you for great execution on this program.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we need a motion.
I move that we adopt the attached resolution adopting a final project plan and project representative for the city's lead service line replacement program with the final cost being subject to city council approval.
Support. Moved by Leaks May and supported by McCulkey.
Leaks May.
Yes.
McCulkey.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes. All right, we're moving on to 8C, which was 7D on the consent agenda. Approval of the resolution to display the pride flag outside Ferndale City Hall. And I believe there are some clarifying language adjustments we need to make.
So, within the resolution, the attachment, I want to be clear that item number one should state the city of Ferndale shall display the progressive pride flag effective June 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2023, outside city Ferndale, et cetera. I wanted to make sure that there was that clarification. And based on that change to the resolution, I will be happy to make the motion, unless there's any questions.
Through the chair, I have questions. Did you say it was the progressive pride flag?
Yes.
Okay, can we define that for the public?
Sure. The progressive pride flag is a variation from the traditional pride flag, which is the six colors. It is inclusive of people of color. It has special bans for people of color, for transgender, for, you're going to test me on this. This is terrible. For gender queer, and I'm missing one.
Yes, please.
Yes, Julia.
Okay, so the flag is called the New Progress Flag. It starts on the inside with yellow and a purple ring, which represents intersex people, people born with variations with their DNA. And then, Greg was right, trans people, people of color, and people who have lived and died with HIV are some of the newer colors. It has a triangle overlapping the six traditional colors. Thank you.
New Progress Flag. Thank you for the clarification. So, it should read, yes, it should read the, play the New Progress Pride Flag. Any other?
Any other changes? Are we good?
No other changes that I need to make.
To be clear, though, on the motion and in the resolution.
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion. So, I move to approve the resolution to display the New Progress Pride Flag outside Ferndale City Hall, as sponsored by Councilman Greg Pollocka.
Moved by Pollocka and supported by Leaks May.
And I do want to make a clarification. Some people have asked me about the, we also try to fly the flag at Jewel and Woodward. That is not a city-approved flag. That is actually approved by MDOT, and we did receive that approval. So, we will be flying the traditional six-color pride flag at Woodward and Jewel by the Ferndale sign. That's been approved by MDOT.
Thank you.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McCulkey.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes. And now we're moving on to 8D, which was 7M on the consent of the approval of the 2023 and 2024 city fee schedule.
And I pulled that because of, we identified through some conversations that happened actually earlier today about chicken coops. We identified that chicken coop review has not been added as a fee on the fee schedule. And so, I would be supportive to approve the fee schedule tonight with the understanding that CED will be updating. with the understanding that CED will be updating and adding the line item to this schedule for the amount, I think, is $35 for the review?
Yeah, through the chair, I want CED's building department just to confirm the name of the, the appropriate name of the fee and then the amount of the current year, plus they have to do the proposed year. Ladies and gentlemen, Kyle Price, Senior Planner 3.
Hello. Thank you again for being here tonight. I would like to note, I'm reasonably certain that the fee schedule we have been using, the line item was for a fence inspection. Because I think that's technically what we have been doing when we go out there, when we inspect the coops. But I completely understand, and especially given our revised ordinance, that a new line item is warranted. So I will confirm this information with the building department, and we can work with the city manager to bring this back to you with a new line item for chicken coop inspections.
Chicken motels? There's a section on page seven that says annual inspections, and it says motels. Should we just put it under that and call it chicken motels?
Well, it is a permanent structure. There we have it. So are you asking us to approve the motion tonight with the inclusion in that you're going to bring back an amendment? How would you like to?
Through the chair, you can approve the motion as stated, and CED can independently, separately, just bring back a specific targeted fee amendment. It's essentially an amendment of the fee schedule.
Okay. Are you guys okay with that? We'll be here on the next meeting, right? Okay, so we would need a motion to approve the fee schedule with the direction of bringing back the chicken coop fee permit the next meeting.
I lost my page.
You said chicken motel, I lost my const.
I lost, I lost the resolution. Okay. Through the chair, I move to approve the 2023-24 fee, city fee schedule with the schedule to be implemented immediately upon approval by council as submitted by the assistant to the city manager, understanding that CED will come back with a chicken coop review.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Pollocka, moved by, not Ferndale.
Pollocka?
Yes.
James? Leaks May? McCulsky? Piana?
Yes. All right. That is the conclusion of our regular agenda. And now we're going to move on to the Call the Council, and I'm going to start over there with Councilman Pollocka. I'm sorry, I did it again. We're going to start with the city manager with department updates as the first part of Call the Council.
Thank you, Mayor. They are going to be brief. I will just say, you know, Dan Antosik of DPW is going to just give a general construction update. Sorry to have you come back one more time, Dan. While he's walking, I just acknowledge that I view Dan and Jeff as subject matter experts in the field now of water and lead lines specifically in our field. So really, it's just, they're a testament to the talent we have in Ferndale. It's just a good reminder.
And it does help having money to spend, so I will say that. Thank you for the support and funding. So we have a lot of construction going on. Like I touched on earlier, we roughly put 200 lead service lines in the ground. We'll probably take a break during the month of June, build out the schedule a little bit more, give our contractor the ability to do some work other than in the city of Ferndale. Our payment improvement program is moving along pretty well. We should be wrapping up our second group of streets here by the end of the month and moving over into our third group of streets for the month of June. So our contractor doing that work, Al, they've been doing a really good job. FDM should be finalizing and finishing up the Bester Water Main beginning of June, and that'll be all shored up. That's been going, going along well. And then Pinecrest sidewalks is roughly 85% done. We're going to move some light poles. Then after we move those light poles, we're going to place some concrete where they used to be. And then we're just waiting on the actual crosswalk signals themselves to come in, just due to long lead time on those. Gillick, oh, yeah, Woodward. Woodward construction is continuing. You're going to see the current traffic closure on Woodward remain up until at least the beginning of July is how it's going to look out there. The contractor will not be doing work at the, you know, Nine Mile and Woodward intersection while we have pride going on in those major special events. So that's baked into the schedule. They may be doing work on the north end or the south end, but they will be staying away from the downtown area for our special events. And then our West Nine Mile project that we're working on with Oak Park is moving along. Bulk of that work going on right now is in Oak Park. We're soon, there has been a little bit of work in Ferndale, some curbs going in, curb repair, but we will be milling and starting on that work here in the next couple of weeks. But that contractor's been moving along at a pretty good pace. And then you may have noticed that MDOT is also doing some work on Eight Mile. That is a project that is solely an MDOT project. From my understanding, they're moving along at a pretty good pace, but it does cause a little bit of, or a little bit of a good time on your morning or afternoon commute, as does the work on 75 and 696. So construction's moving along well. We're going to keep it moving along well, and that's all I really have tonight. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. Next, Emmanuel Johnson to give an update on Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few quick updates from Parks and Recreation. First of all, this past Thursday, we had our bike rodeo event out at Garbage Park at the Safety Town. I was unable to attend, but from the pictures that I saw, it looked like a fun event with a pretty sizable showing from the public. We gave away, I think we gave away bike helmets and different bike accessories and things of that nature. We had a big helping from different departments, from fire department, police, and CED. So we want to thank them for their contributions to making the event successful. As far as upcoming events, we have the Gravity Art and Skate Fair, which will be coming up on Saturday, June 10th, from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Gary Park. That is being done in partnership with Reveal Productions, and it is our event to kick off this summer. It is directly after the last day of school. We planned it that way on purpose. It's a family event to kick the summer off. We'll have bounce houses, we'll have games and activities. We'll have an art fair featuring local artists that will be selling some of their art. And we'll also have a handful of skateboard, scooter, inline skating, and BMX contests available. The event is free to attend. The contests are $10 per entry. We also opened up registration today for our pajama movie party that will be taking place at the Detroit Curling Club, where we'll be having a viewing of Puss in Boots, The Last Wish. Tickets for that will be $5 in advance and $10 at the door. It will be surrounded by other activities as well, including a Mazda mural, a couple of bounce houses, and several other things courtesy of Oakland County Parks and Recreation that will be coming out to do some of those activities. It will also include some popcorn and refreshments available for sale as concessions. And then finally, we have our concert in the park that will be taking place on Sunday, June 25th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. out at Martin Road Park, and it'll be featuring the Ferndale Concert Community Band. I'm sorry, Ferndale Community Concert Band. The event is bringing your own blankets, and we hope everybody comes out and enjoys some free music. That's it from Parks and Recreation right now.
Thank you, Emmanuel. Let's verify, we don't have any other updates from departments? Yeah, you don't want to miss this one.
You heard the ding.
Duh, I don't know why we didn't think of this earlier. The Splash Pad will be opening at Martin Road Park this Friday. It will be open from this Friday until Labor Day. I believe the hours are 10:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. for that. And obviously, it's completely free. And come on out and enjoy, as long as the weather permitting. Enjoy the Splash Pad as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Good save. And I will, I will close it off just with a quick acknowledgement. Oh, I didn't see Michael.
Thought you were going to get away without me talking. Okay, so this past Saturday, May 20th, we had a great number of volunteers that helped plant flowers over at the Veterans Memorial Mall over on Livernoy. We actually were done an hour and a half earlier than we were planning because we had such a great turnout of people that wanted to come out and get dirty. So I also wanted to remind everybody that this Monday, May 29th, is the annual Ferndale's Memorial Day Parade. It starts at 10:00 a.m. The difference this year compared to the past several years is that because of the Woodward construction, we are changing the route. And that route will be starting on Livernoy, going north to Oak Ridge, west to Pinecrest, then south to Nine Mile Road, and then east on Nine Mile to back to Livernoy to the Veterans Memorial Mall for the memorial service ceremony. What I encourage everybody, because of this new route, that Gary Park is part of the route on Pinecrest, so bring your family, have a lawn chair, blanket, enjoy it, and have a great time. And it starts again at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Now I'll close off with just a brief acknowledgment, service acknowledgment for Lena Stevens, as she's, she did leave, unfortunately. But I did want to just comment, Lena had a transitional role as the DDA director. She started just a few months moving, relocating her family here from Georgia. When she accepted the director position, she started a few months just prior to COVID-19. Lena was fundamental, played a fundamental role in DDA business relationships in securing $104,000 in grants from the Oakland County that really played a key role in keeping businesses going during the early days of the pandemic. She was a great partner for the city, and I just, I have to acknowledge all of her achievements and all the things she's done. Closing out with cultivating a brand-new board of directors, working in partnership with the mayor and council to identify board, new directors to come and volunteer coming out of the pandemic, which has been just really critical to the downtown's continuing success. So thank you, Lena, for your service. Mayor, cheers.
Thank you. We'll hand it over to the rest of council to close this out with Call the Council, and starting with Councilman Pollocka.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. First thing, this Wednesday, the, I'm sorry, not this Wednesday, the Wednesday, the 31st, at 7:00 p.m. will be the Ferndale Pride Interfaith Service. It's a hour and a half program where people from various faiths come to express their faiths to people within the LGBTQAI+ community. All are welcome, and it's really a beautiful ceremony. So I hope, I hope people come to it. The next item is on June 1st, which is a Thursday. At 7:00 p.m., we will have the official flag-raising ceremony right outside the city hall here, where we will raise the new progressive flag. New progress flag? Why can't I get that name right? And I welcome everybody. Again, that's June 1st at 7:00 p.m. And the last thing, I would like to make a request of Kara Sokol. If she could get a announcement out about the Splash Pad opening and maybe some social media things that can be shared? Awesome, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we go to Leaks May.
I thought I had something, but I don't right now. Not this time.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, Mayor, can I take two seconds of her time? I just want to thank everybody that came out this evening that supported the, us passing the resolution and the pride flag, and council for supporting my request to raise the flag for the month of June. That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Go to my right, here.
Do you want to start?
Sure, I have nothing additional. Okay.
All right, I have a few things. Starting positive, ending positive, a few brights.
Thanks for the heads up.
Right. Again, I just want to sort of echo, repeat myself about the success of the rain barrel program. We finally got some rain recently, where we really got to see the effect of it. And just a reminder, if you participated in the rain barrel program and you're still a little stuck with the installation process, please reach out to our zero, or Dionne, she can point and write. So that we're capturing some of that rainwater. I'm going to lodge complaints about the sound. Oh, what was my other? Oh, we'll have to hold on to it till the next meeting. And I'm really looking forward to our season. I really want to emphasize that, you know, in Ferndale, we often are in sort of an acceptance, beyond acceptance, an actual inclusion bubble. But LGBTQ rights are under attack all over the country, and we are not immune. We know that. And I think it's important now, though it's always been, it feels more urgent than ever for the rights of everyone who they are and to make their own faces about their own bodies and their own families. So please support pride this year especially.
Thank you. Yes. I also wanted to echo the city manager expressing my disappointment but support for outgoing DDA Director Lena Stevens. It was a gift that she came on board right as the, right before the pandemic was starting and having a leader who could really reorient, reorientate and sort of set the DDA on a new path and had utmost confidence in her leadership throughout the pandemic, as much as stressful that it is being a new mom in a new city under pandemic constraints with business owners who are under also significant duress. And she managed beautifully throughout it all, and I will miss her. But I have full confidence in Summer to take us through until the next executive director. I also want to say that there's been a lot of, I guess everybody knows about the rail issues in Ferndale. As part of the National League of Cities, there's a heavy movement right now on rail legislation through the National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure Committee that I sit on. And I really do hope one of you will take up the mantle and join an LLC, NLC federal committee because it does bring resources to our community and elevates our storytelling. But there is the Railway Safety Act of 2023 that is being proposed, and it is to prevent future derailments and to endure the consequences of environmental cleanup after train derailment. So after Paradise in Ohio happened, we got a lot of questions about the containers running through our community on the railroad line. This legislation would help put more accountability into railroads to prevent toxic spills and other things that could go wrong with derailment. But it also, legislation is also being looked at for helping cities deal with trains that are blocking traffic for long periods of time. So these are laws that we need to be paying attention to. I am lending my voice. I am lending my voice, but we are not the only city that has these issues. We're fortunate we have a quiet zone because we advocated that early on with the former council. But really need to pay attention to the National League of Cities tracking of this on this city's behalf. And I'm representing Ferndale on this. And it's the Railway Safety Act, Senate Bill 576. And that's for rail safety in blocked crossings as part of this. So there's like 500 cities. It is like a huge issue. So no, this is being heard by the current administration and the current Congress. And now is the time to send your email to your congresswoman Haley Stevens to let her know to support these bills. And then finally, you know, I I've been on council for 14 years, and tonight I had the first thing ever happen to me, and I'm really kind of annoyed and upset, but when a resident calls and complains about something, I understand there's always frustration that comes with that. But, and when you've heard from the city manager and then you persistently call my cell phone eight times in a row because you aren't getting me to pick up, that is almost, is so disrespectful of how to be treating an elected official because you want their attention now. That's not how this works. And if you don't like the answer from the city manager, you don't harass an elected official to get their attention. So please tell your friends and family that's what happened tonight. At the, just wouldn't stop ringing over and over. And so it's totally inappropriate behavior of someone interacting with a resident. So please educate your residents and friends. Please do not do that to any elected official anywhere. So with that, I'm ending this at 9:42. So thank you and have a good night.